Oh my god, look what came out of the woodwork shop. Doug, you mind? You putting your karate band on?
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the... Welcome to our September 26, 2017, regular meeting of the Board of Directors of International Village.
Is this being taped?
Yes. And we will now call meeting to order. Listen up. Carl, please call the rule.
John.
Here.
Louis.
Louis? Louis?
Aaron.
Is he there?
Yeah.
Marat. Doug. Marcelo. Crystal.
Okay, I think we have a full house. By the way, we're starting at 7:39. All right. The first item of business is the approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes to approve. That's the June 27, 2017, regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve as presented? Mike? Okay, I'm getting like a lot of filming. Anyway, do we have a motion to approve as presented in way of reading of the June 27, 2017, regular meeting minutes?
Is nobody waking up yet?
Anybody? Anybody want to make that motion? Minutes? Okay. Marat? Second, anyone want to second it? Doug seconds. Okay, any objection? Hearing unapproved? Next item. The next item is the president's message. Do we have a stand for the mic? Help me with my stand. Get there? Oh. Hurricane Dan.
Yeah.
Good evening. I know a lot of you are here tonight to talk about the recent hurricane. But before we get into any discussion about our preparations for response to the storm, we really, I think, at this point have to acknowledge that we were very fortunate. If the hurricane had remained on its originally projected track, the damage to our community would have been devastating. So let's thank God it didn't happen. However, even though we were spared, the worst Irma still has been our community's most significant event since Hurricane Wilma. And cleanup and repairs will continue for the next few weeks. Most of the damage came from trees and limbs that were down by the strong winds, causing a few broken windows and torn docking screens, and damage to several cars. We also had several leaks reported, as well as damage to a number of lampposts and to the wooden fence around the clubhouse and the fence next to the resident entrance, which has been replaced by a makeshift fence to prevent unauthorized walk-ins. And there were a number of other... There was a number of other things that were damaged on a small scale. I want to take this opportunity to say a big thank you to our International Village maintenance crew, who got to work right after the storm cleaning up the extensive debris, leaves, and branches that littered the entire property and clearing trees that were blocking roads and walkways. I'd also like to thank all the owners and residents who needed the warnings to secure their properties, as well as those I personally observed after the storm chipping in without being asked by raking leaves in front of their buildings or checking in on neighbors and absent owners' properties. Hurricane Irma demonstrated that when put to the test, International Village truly rises to the occasion as we come together as neighbors to help each other and show our love for this community we call home. Irma also was a sobering wake-up call and hopefully a learning experience to help us be even better prepared for the next one which will inevitably come our way. And we'll get more into that as we proceed with our agenda. But for now, the next item is the treasures report. Marat?
Well, I go...
Can you speak to any microphone, please?
Hello? As of August 2017, we have 5,000... 556,000 and $11,000. To be more concrete, so I cannot even say it. For total operating cash. And we have $16,000 and $68,000 for total special assessment cash. And Ingo has $628,000 and $462,000 for other bank accounts in cash. And current year net income is $76,677. And Monde Sutra for the August 2017 is $19,959. So we have total assets of $1,677,700 total.
Marat, is there anything put aside for people who have paid privately? You know what I'm saying?
Right, like what?
You know, like their assessment? You know, prepaid their assessment? Where is that money going? Where did that money go? When people prepaid assessments like you had back in July, where did that money go?
Yes, we have $16,000 and change Sutra on that. So we still collect them...
You're passing too close to the mic.
I'm sorry. So we still collecting money and we still have money in that. So we have $16,000 and change for Sutra. So we still collect and keep them. This year, maybe, no, next year? John?
Marat, when people pay their maintenance...
Okay.
Do we have a lot of people who have not paid their maintenance? That would go into your budget, do you think?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Yeah, if they don't pay, it's not going to show up, yeah?
What do we have outstanding then?
Yeah, we have $556,000 and change.
No, outstanding and people who have not paid?
Well, that...
Okay, actually, that would be in the financials. I could look for that for you. Actually, Dan, can you find that line for us in the financials? In the meantime, a question about the special assessment. We kind of went into this at great length during the presentation that we had from the auditors. We had kind of a back and forth on that one. And that money, a lot of it was owed back to operating. Because when we did our loan modification back in 2014, the bank at the time was Wells Fargo. And the bank was demanding a very large principal paydown. They wanted to get that loan paid off early. We were eventually about a year, I forget how long, two years later, a year and a half later, we were able to get refinanced. But at that point, we had to pay down a substantial portion of it. And since the money that was collected in special assessment up to that point was not enough to pay what they wanted, we did have to take money out of operating, which is then owed back to operating. So a lot of it went back to operating. And the remainder is going toward the loan. The paid loan on the new loan, which is the bank is called...
And how long is that loan for? Eight months? Is that the one that's eight months?
That, no, that's...
August, it's supposed to be in August?
It's in August, right, it entered.
Is that the one in August 2018?
Right. Right, and then some of it also is labeled, as we put it back into the operating, some of it is labeled as special assessment purposes. Because when the special assessment was originally approved in 2006, it wasn't just for the loan, it was also for special assessment purposes, which are laid out as deferred maintenance, security, and I forget what the other one is. Those are the two maintenance.
John, does that take into effect when you buy apartments or whatever?
When you buy a...
When the village is buying apartments? Is the village buying apartments?
No, no, the village, we foreclosed on apartments. And then we have bought a couple over the years. But right now, we don't own any that we purchased. There was one that we purchased, I think it was last year, that we sold seven months ago. The other apartments that we own are through foreclosure, through the association foreclosure. And some of those are actually fairly technically owned by the bank, but we have title to them until the bank takes over.
How is the outstanding balance for the loan, Joe?
What is all that money?
What money? Oh, the money went right back into the operating funds.
That's part of a million and a half dollars sitting in the bank.
We have 556,000 in operating cash and then 16 and...
Oh, six?
Special assessment, 16,000 special assessment cash. 628,000 in other bank accounts and so forth. Yes?
When is the loan due again?
August.
The loan?
Yeah, when is it up?
Oh, yeah, that's August.
So how much do we owe still? How much do we owe still?
I don't recall how much we owe still. It's maybe hundreds of thousands, maybe a couple of... I can't remember. Dan, do you know up there? It should be in here somewhere. I think it's 250,000. It looks like about 250,000.
So we finished paying that in August, next year?
It's in July? Well, the bank loan term is in August, but I think the last payment is due in July, I believe. I believe.
250, right?
Yeah, 215.
Next year?
Okay.
August 30th?
July. I believe it's July, but Dan will tell you. Okay, so that's it for the treasures report? Did I see another hand up somewhere? Yes?
What is... Why do we have, why are we accumulating so much cash? And what is going to be done with it?
Part of it is being used as collateral for the loan that the bank insists on. A lot of it is collateral.
Okay, and once that note is satisfied, we're still going to have the money?
Right. Well, whatever expenses that we have, we just had, you know, hurricanes. I don't know if that compromised any of the roofs to the extent that it might accelerate the need to replace it. Whether, you know, we're originally going to do it in five years, maybe now because of the hurricane, that particular roof needs to be replaced in here, I don't know. So obviously, the money is there if that should be the case.
Is it unusual for a nonprofit to be accumulating that cash?
What about the streets that need to be redone?
Sorry?
The streets need to be redone.
Oh, you mean the surface, okay. Well, again, all that money will become available once the loan is paid off.
They have to wait till next year or not?
But John, one thing I don't still understand. When we acquired that loan, we had this SBA loan. We had the insurance company pay some money. We had an assessment. Where all that money went, I still don't get it. I still don't have the numbers. Why that money?
As you know, that assessment was imposed back before this, before anybody on this board was on board.
Yeah, but where all of it went?
I'll have to look back in the financials for previous years, yes?
So what happens before next August when a lot of these roofs have to be replaced?
I don't know if a lot of them have to be replaced, I don't think so.
I have a leak. I've had it for months. And I have another one after the hurricane.
It may not be a need for replacement. We'd have to look at that, which building are you?
I'm in the Bordeaux.
What's your name?
On the top floor, Ruskin.
Okay, yeah, I think you emailed us before, right?
We emailed you many times.
Right.
But I feel that nothing really gets accomplished.
So actually, can you hold that question? We do have an item specifically on the hurricane, which may be the next item. Actually, the next item is a manager's report. Dan?
Okay. Fire extinguishers were inspected and replaced as needed throughout all the buildings. Tree trimming of the property began on the 22nd of August. It was delayed because we had to put a different company. ATEP is still in the process of preparing the building for the fiber optics installation. The pool was inspected by the health department and found to have some minor deficiencies. Sand rails in the outdoor pool were not up to code, but have been brought up to code by our pool company. The inspector discovered that both indoor and outdoor pool did not have working nightlights. Lights have been installed in past inspection. New light rings around the outdoor and indoor pool have been added in past inspection. The inspector said she has never seen the pool looking so good. A1 flower plumbing. Z2Y had a water line behind the heater needed to be repaired. G3M had problems in the main line that was repaired. S3G and S3I had piping repairs. G1Z had piping repairs. O3Z, main line and valve repairs. American Fire Sprayer did repair on a number of the backflow units throughout the community. PMSAC worked on AdaWise 1L, which is owned by the association. Condenser was not cooling. Repaired short circuit at the compressor's terminal and added freon. AdaWise lobby condenser not working. Installed hard start boost relay to help start compressor. St. Moritz third floor laundry replaced the air handler. Clubhouse lobby was not cooling. Replaced the broken blower belt and replaced valve core on both service valves. Bordeaux third floor laundry, water was leaking from the air handler. Nottingham, the left side AC unit was causing the main breaker to trip and had a hard boost relay and start capacitor installed. Nottingham 1J, 2J, 3J. The main air handler drain line for the J stack was leaking. The line was repaired, pressure cleaned and sanitized. St. Moritz 1F, 2F, 3F. The main air handler drain line was clogged for the entire line. The line was repaired, pressure cleaned and sanitized. St. Moritz 1F, 2F, 3F. The main air handler drain line for the F stack was leaking. The line was repaired, sanitized, and pressure cleaned. We purchased two sets of elevator pads for a price of $2,458.94. As the people in Interlocking are aware, we had a major problem with the elevator for over eight days. Oracle came out the Wednesday before the hurricane. They shut the elevator down. And the next day, I called them and I got a story that we're not sending out any repair people because of the fuel shortage and we're afraid that our technicians will run out of gas and they'll be caught outside. And I said, "The hurricane's not coming for three days." What does that got to do with anything? This is, I was told this was company policy. I spoke to dispatchers, I spoke to supervisors, I spoke to business managers for the company. They all gave me the same song and dance. Finally, after the hurricane, three days after the hurricane, they came out to work on the Bordeaux building. And I went and spoke to the tech that was there because I wanted him to go do the Interlocking first. And he said, "I don't have authorization to work on the Interlocking." I said, "What do you mean? This has been out of service since last Wednesday." He said, "Dave, I told his supervisors he needed a part. They weren't giving him authorization to pull apart." I called over there, I spoke with somebody. They said, "Oh, that's not covered in your contract. We need written authorization." I said, "We have never had to give you guys written authorization in the past for anything. You guys tell us that there's a problem. You tell us if it's not covered by the contract and we tell you fix it anyway. We only have one elevator in each building." They sent me an authorization form. I signed the form, got it to fix it. But I found out afterwards, we'd speaking to another elevator company, Express Elevator, that the parts that they wanted to charge us almost $3,000 for should be covered by the contract. I went back and looked at the contract and sure enough, that part is covered by the contract. So we won't be paying that invoice when they bother to send it to us. As you all know, Oracle has been just one big thorn in our side, at least as long as I've been here for eight months. The board has decided that they're going to terminate Oracle and that they're going to bring in another company. The board will be speaking on their contract later on in the meeting.
When is their, I know you were talking about this months ago. When is their contract up?
Their contract is up in May.
So that's the...
We're terminating them as of October 1st.
So then you have to pay?
No. Breach of contract. They refuse to come out here and service our elevators.
Well, I noticed that in the elevators, it hasn't been, you know, it says it hasn't been serviced since, I think, December of 2014 or something, if you look at the inspection.
They haven't sent us the...
Can we leave, hold all questions on that item until... Because elevator is an item on the agenda, so... Dan, if you could just end your, finish your report and then we'll get back to that.
Pacific Roots previously repaired the leak in St. Moritz third floor staircase. It was still leaking. They are coming back out to fix it. There were approximately 22 leaks reported throughout the community. Work orders have been made and maintenance is working on them. Pacific Roots called those leaks that maintenance could not do. Todd Knapp Incorporated Roofers was called to inspect the leak in the tea shop and also the clubhouse. There were leaks in the hallway by the cabin. Only one skylight in the clubhouse needs to be sealed. Almost done. Okay, I already spoke about Oracle, so we'll leave that for the time being. Landscaping. Z3F Winston Richards called and advised a tree fella on his minivan. He left his phone number on his vehicle for the tree trimming company to lift the tree off his car so he can move the vehicle spot. Tree trimming came out on the 12th and the 15th through the 15th to do cleanup on the hurricane. They are still coming out because there's still a lot, as you know, that needs to be cleaned up. Orleans and Bordeaux have no cameras as the power went out and it... Orleans and Or... It was a mistake. Orleans and Bordeaux have no cameras. They need to be installed. We purchased cameras for those two buildings and they will be installed very soon. Washing machines out of order in Interlock in Marseille, in Yorkshire. The washing machine company was called. They should be working. The biggest problem we keep finding when they come out is that, two things. People try to jam two loads of washing into one machine. Also, if for some reason they want to open the cover again, instead of just pressing the button like they're supposed to and wait till the lights change, they sit there and they punch the button over and over and over again and it messes up the electronics and the machine just stops working. Every time they come out, it costs $65 to them just to come out and reset those boxes. And if there's something seriously wrong, then obviously the price goes up even more.
Can't any of the maintenance people know how to take care of that?
No. It has to be reset by them.
Do we have cameras installed in those areas?
I'm sorry?
Do we have cameras in those areas?
No.
No. No, not where the...
Can we put up signs in Spanish and English, in French, in Italian?
We can put up signs in 100 languages. People are still going to do what people do. There are signs all over the community about what people should and shouldn't be doing and they ignore them. Orleans lost its power during the storm. It was the main breaker popped. There was no handle on the main breaker.
The entire Orleans lost, the entire Orleans lost power?
Yes.
The entire building?
It was the main breaker for the building.
But I'm seeing some people saying no.
It's on one side, one side.
Only here?
One side. One side.
Just one side.
Okay.
J-side.
The handle on the main breaker was missing. So when the electrician came out, he rigged something. He's purchased a new handle for that. It was installed the other day. So that's back on the way it should be. When the power came on, one of the apartments suffered a power surge and their breaker box shorted out and had to be replaced by the electric company. Between cabins 5 and 4. One of the light bulbs outside damaged in the storm. We purchased nine new lampposts. Unfortunately, they don't match the color, but the maintenance crew is going to spray paint them so that they match the existing light bulbs. Okay, so basically, it was, we had very little power loss, but Orleans was the only one that had any serious power loss.
So what do you mean? You said half of it went out and then came back and then... It wasn't half, right? It was just like 12 apartments?
What did the end say?
It was about 12 apartments.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because you say there was like four on each floor there. It was a lightning strike?
Yes.
Okay. That affected that FPL box?
Right. And that caused the main breaker to...
And we repaired that with the contractor?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I have a few questions on this first. Aspire Elevator, is that another company? Aspire Elevator?
That's the pads.
Aspire.
Oh, that's who we brought the pads from. It's not an elevator company that supplies.
It's a different, it's not Oracle?
No, no, no.
It's Aspire. Okay. So, because that was $2,400, you said, right?
Right, that was for the, just the two extra sets of pads.
And then on the last page, you said Oracle elevator came out on September 14, repaired approximately...
Right, those are the two that we're not paying because...
2795 and 4800?
That's correct. They're actually covered in our contract.
Are you saying the total, the total here is like seven, over $7,500?
And we're not paying.
We're not paying $7,500?
We're not paying, no.
Okay. I mean, is it definitely defined in the contract that we don't have to pay?
Yes. Yeah, the two parts where it had to do with the door. And in the contract, it specifically states that any door protection items are covered in the contract.
Yeah, another thing you said was on, the board decided to terminate. I think that was several months ago. We tried to, we tried to terminate them and then they refused to be terminated. They said they would take us to court and we've done a term of letter and all that stuff. So that's why we're still stuck with them. But you're saying now that this other company, Express, is going to come in and work for us? Like what, for free or until the expiration of the...
They'll come in starting October 1st and they will do basic maintenance on the other elevators.
How much?
Nothing.
So they want to work for free?
They will work for free. The only thing that they will charge you for is if they have to replace parts. They'll charge you just for the parts.
Does Oracle charge for replaced parts?
In many cases, yes.
So it's not exactly the same as if we had a contract?
No, not exactly the same. But as of March, I believe, in their contract, they would start paying them and there would be many things that we were paying to Oracle that we would not be paying to them.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm just a little bit concerned about that. So we're going to terminate them, but we don't know if they're going to object again?
That's correct. What we had spoken about was that we were going to tell them that they were not going to be able to come back on the property. Well, we, what we, we had spoken about was that we were going to tell them that they were not going to be able to come back on the property. And that at that point, Express would take care of our elevators.
How, how much are we paying, um, I mean, sorry, the, how much are we paying Oracle on a monthly basis?
Uh, we pay, quarterly, we pay them about forty-six hundred dollars.
And when, and when does their contract expire?
May.
Seven months.
The end of May.
So basically, that would...